Yours, sir?
I'm calling July twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four. Planning Board's on commission meeting to order. Roll call, please, Greg.
Blumer?
Here.
DeBenedetto?
Here.
Whistler?
Here.
Boise?
Here.
Olton? Conley?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Okay, and then you'll know. And I think Kevin and Jeremy are on the line, right?
I see Kevin and I see Jeremy.
Okay. First item of business are the minutes. The, uh... Assuming everybody's read through those, the minutes of their last meeting, uh, of July tenth. Um, I have to say they were pretty complete, Greg.
Yeah.
Twenty what? Twenty-three pages or something like that?
I think it was just twenty.
Um, is anybody... Before I ask for a motion to approve, does anybody have any, uh, comments, corrections, uh, additions?
Uh, teeny tiny correction. Toward the end where they're talking about timber line townhouses and they're talking about Grant Avenue South and Adams. And I think three different places, there was a little bitty typo that said Grand rather than Grant.
Do you know what page that was?
It was toward the very end.
Can you find it, Greg?
But it's in, um...
We can do a search on it later, so you can just note that.
So it's Grant rather than Grant.
Yeah, it needs to be Grant.
Yeah.
Considering we don't have a Grant.
Any other comments or...
Um, I had on page two, Don Carroll. I didn't know if his name was spelled with two Rs or one R because we had it in both, both... It's probably not a big deal. Don Carroll, C.A.R.O.L.L. or...
I thought it was two Rs and one L, but I'm not sure.
Well, you don't even have that option.
You don't?
No, and I... So I don't think it's a big deal on that.
Okay.
The next page, um, where it says Wally Tate, uh, resides in Country Club Estates, he's actually the HOA president for RLCC-E, and I think that should be in there.
Did he include that in the...
He did. I didn't just know it.
Yeah, when he introduced himself, he did, yeah.
Yeah, so he's the HOA president for RLCC-E. So I thought that was kind of important. Let me see if I can get pages here. One, two, three, four.
I'm impressed you printed it.
Five. I printed it on recycled stock. I'm only at ten.
Jeff, did you have anything while she was looking?
Yeah, I think it's page ten on the third paragraph under my name. It, uh, reads that he would like to see a proposal for recommended zoning changes to get a better stand. And I think the intent there was to get a better understanding.
Right.
And then I had one with Becky Van Horn.
Which page?
Further. Thirteen or fourteen. Becky Van Horn's on the bottom of the page. And it's the See Em Alive Zoo, which you wouldn't have known. It's actually S.E.E.-E.M. See Em Alive Zoo that she was referring to.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure if I'm spelling names.
There we go.
Um, also, I'm on about page fourteen or fifteen. Conley at the bottom. This sentence is raise concerns about how trash will be collected from the houses with the drive-through. And it was without the drive-through.
Yeah.
And I would just do a search for Adams. Sometimes it came up Adam.
Okay.
And I actually thought this was on page seventeen. Um, it says add that the site plan includes a sidewalk on Adams. Did we include a sidewalk on Adams? I thought we had this whole discussion on floating sidewalks where...
I think I thought the sidewalk was on Adams but not on Grant.
Grant.
Yeah.
Definitely not, but we did ask them to put a sidewalk.
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to confirm that. So then on the very next page, which was eight, nine, nineteen, Conley noted the change to condition adding the parking lot exit will... Will exit on Adams and a secondary gated exit for emergencies with sidewalk on Grant.
I think that's supposed to be walkway.
Yes. And that was walkway. I just knew that that was wrong. That's it.
Teresa, do you have anything?
Nothing for me, Al, thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? I think Sandy got it. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes of, uh, July tenth.
Twenty-fourth.
Today's the twenty-fourth. Of July tenth, as amended.
Yeah, I'm looking at the machine, July tenth.
As amended.
As amended. I need a second.
A second?
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Gray?
Yeah.
Conley?
Yes.
Olton? Boise?
Yes.
Whistler? Whistler?
Yes.
DeBenedetto?
Yes.
Blumer?
Yes.
Okay. Communications from the board, uh, urban renewal agency update, Jeff?
Um, they had a meeting last, uh, Monday or, I guess, there... I was a little bit behind. They actually had a... Had scheduled a tour of the urban renewal district, but, uh, I think ended up there wasn't a quorum and so they canceled it. So the next meeting is, uh, I believe, August twelfth.
Okay.
Wow.
That's it?
That's it.
Any questions, Jeff? Jeff, I keep hearing rumors that there's two possibilities of possible housing developments there. Is there... Is the committee aware of any of that? Have they discussed any of that?
Hasn't come up in any of the meetings I've been at.
Yeah, there was an out... There was a developer from St. Louis and then somebody mentioned the A Y property is a possibility. That hasn't come up at all?
No.
Have you guys gotten a budget yet?
A couple of meetings ago, I think they had an estimate of... I can't remember for sure, but...
Would the money go straight to the city so the city would have the number?
Uh, Jeremy's the... Is the treasurer, so he's... He's got a handle on what the numbers are.
Okay. Any other questions, Jeff? You're looking at me like you have something to add.
Um, if you would like, um, I am aware of, tangentially, of a couple of different conversations about developments up in that area.
Yeah.
Um, and they... They have not yet reached... I think they were mentioned once or twice at the urban renewal districts, but their conversation was they're trying to build a lump before they spend money. But there is a piece of city property that is adjacent in between the A Y property and also the concrete, um, plant before that. So there's... There is a section forty-two developer who's looking at acquiring one or both of those and then approaching the city, to see if the city's property can be made part of that to give them a larger piece to work with.
Okay.
The second one, I believe, that there's a conversation about property that is actually outside of town limits currently, so it wouldn't be urban renewal district. But it's between the... The existing city and Two Mile, which is also not part of the city, although they are on city sewer.
Right.
Um, but there's a whole bunch of conversations about capacities and stuff that would have to happen long before that ever...
The reason I bring it up is, and I'm sure some of my fellow board members, that sometimes we are the recipient of these rumors and people want to know if they're accurate or not. And what I tended to do is refer them to you, as a mayor. Um, but, you know, it's a hot button item, so if you have some information that we could publish or put out there without... It might help.
Yeah, um, I mean, this is a public meeting and so people are here, but I don't think there's... I think it is a fair statement to say that there are developers looking at development being subsidized...
Within the...
Within this... Within the city in multiple locations. None of those are as of yet public information or I think appropriate.
At least one of them was within the urban renewal district.
At least one of them isn't within the urban renewal district.
All right.
That would have probably been a better way to say it.
Yeah, okay. Um, anything else?
No, I would just add, John, what Dave said, that the intent is to build up a bucket of fund before really looking at any proposals.
Okay. I had another date to ask, well, what's this fund going to be spent on?
Well, there's the criteria that's in the urban renewal plan. And the committee has been talking about looking at developing a scoring system, rating system.
Okay.
But that's all been currently under... Still under discussion.
Okay. Sandy, City Council, playing... Pretending to the planning board?
As everyone's aware, um, the request for the zoning change for Spire's did... Was on the agenda at City Council meeting last night, and it was tabled because they did withdraw the request. Um, we did get a few comments. But... But basically, everything that we've ever heard was there. It wasn't, um, the people that... It wasn't all the people that we had here. It was a smaller group. Probably the thing that we did discuss, at least in land use and planning, um, is we're still discussing camping on privately owned land and camping on... On...
City land.
On commercially... Privately owned commercial property and privately owned residential property. Um, I did reach out to Jeremy and Greg about what's in zoning that prohibits someone from putting an RV in the backyard and having the relatives live there for a week. And there's absolutely nothing in zoning that says you can't do it. It's just that the definition of a residence is not an RV or a tent. So, um, I think for right now, we're at the point that there's nothing against camping on your own property. So, at least lies that. And for the resident, for the privately owned commercial property, there is an ordinance that's going to be rewritten because it combines two items instead of just one. And that's a fourteen day limit on, uh, camping on privately owned commercially zoned property. So that will be coming up to the City Council someday.
Are we going to have to clarify that language within the zoning regulations?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Because they're not a residence.
Okay.
It was only in the definitions that it... That it appeared.
Okay.
The other thing that we did talk about needed to be changed in zoning was, which we discussed as well, is a drive-through facility. I think that this board originally thought it was a drive-through commercial facility as opposed to a drive-through residential complex.
Yeah.
And I think that's just something that when we get into, uh, our zoning after all these other ones, that we need to clean up a little bit.
Yeah, I got a couple of messages on that one.
Only two?
Yeah.
Okay.
They were both long, though.
Anyway, so, you know, that's going to be in the works at some point.
So that's something we need to clarify within our language.
Yes. Yes.
Greg, would you make a note of that, please? As when time comes. All right, our county representative is not here. She's attending a rodeo, um, wrap-up meetings, I guess, so... Okay, moving on to new business. A public hearing for the conditional use permit application for healthcare facility expansion greater than two thousand square feet to an existing building on lots thirty through thirty-three of block seven of Red Lodge, Country Club Estates, within the commercial entrance, north, C three, in zoning district. Our hearing procedure is... Mitch, I gave you the procedure, so do I have to go through it and explain it to you, or you want me to?
Nope, we're good.
We follow that fairly closely.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, at this time then, uh, qualify the board. Does any, uh, member of the planning board have any expedite communication to disclose?
Do I have? Because I attended that pre-meeting.
No.
Okay.
Um, yeah, both Sandy and I did attend a pre-meeting to get... To answer some questions, but I don't think that excuses us from making a judgment on this because no decisions were made. We were just clarifying the zoning regulations for the applicant. Does any member feel they should recuse themselves from participation in the hearing and decision on the matter before the board?
No.
No?
No.
Hey, Teresa, while I think about it, um, I should, uh... If you have something to say, uh, put a hands up or just holler because my focus sometimes is not on that screen and I don't see it. So jump right into it if you... Okay?
Thanks, Al, yep.
Um, has the proper... Has matter been properly noticed or as required by the Red Lodge zoning regulations?
Yeah.
Okay. But the record indicates that the Red Lodge planning board has been called and qualified to hear the matter at hand, that the matter is a quasi-judicial in nature and has properly been noticed. So what we'll do now is we'll hear a report from the behalf of the city, and then I'll hear one on behalf of the applicant. Then we'll open it up for, um, public comment on this particular issue. And then, um, the members of the planning board may ask questions of the applicant or the city. So, uh, who's going to give the report on behalf of the city? Jeremy, is that you?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine, so the floor is yours.
Um, yeah, so just like last time, I'll just briefly go over the staff report so we can keep this thing moving along. Uh, Bear Tooth Billings Clinic is proposing expansion of the existing hospital. Uh, the expansion will provide internal food service for patients, guests, and staff. Um, it's a two-story expansion with the first floor being three thousand five hundred and twenty-nine square feet, second floor having one thousand sixty-eight square feet. Um, the zoning regulations require that any expansion of a allowed commercial use or conditional use requires that a conditional use permit be obtained. And then also tonight, you'll do the design review of this as well because this is in the commercial entrance zoning district. Um, as we go through this, uh, pretty much just the standard conditions of approval have been placed in here. Um, nothing too crazy. Um, basically just requiring everything that's required in the, um... In the zoning regulations. Um, so no special conditions with this. Um, they are proposing the expansion within, uh, the developed area of the property, obviously connected to the existing hospital. Um, they're proposing landscaping, new sidewalks around the... The expansion. Uh, landscaping appears to meet the requirements of the zoning regulations. Um, stormwater drainage will still be treated by the existing lot development. And then we did look at kind of the... We did ask the applicant some questions on the parking. The expansion will not increase the number of beds or the number of employees for the hospital, uh, according to the applicant, and therefore no additional parking spaces are required, um, for the expansion. Um, other than that, um, we have not received any public comment at this time. Going through my notes here. I think with that, I'll just turn it over to... Back over to the planning board. We, uh, we don't see any issues with the proposal at this time. Um, and we would recommend approval of both, uh, the conditional use permit and the design.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, it's the applicant to make a presentation to the board.
Sure.
I asked, even though we may know each other, I ask that you identify yourself, where you live, and what your association is with this project.
Absolutely. Well, good evening. Thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Mitch Goffin. I'm the vice president of facility services, construction for Billings Clinic. And Billings Clinic is affiliated with the Bear Tooth Hospital. And, um, over here to my left is A.J. Cook. He's the director of facility services for, uh, Bear Tooth. And behind me is Shannon Christensen, our architect on record with Christian Terrell for the project. Thank you. Yeah, the, um... Jeremy said it well. We, uh, when we built the building, I actually was a project manager at the time we built it. And when we built the building, we were going to put in a kitchen. And, uh, during that time, we had negotiations with St. John's, um, facility there. And we came up with the model of having them do the cooking and then bringing it over for our patients. Since then, that, uh, relationship changed, and so we knew that we wanted to add the kitchen onto the facility. And early on in the design, there's three expansions to the building that we planned early on was this one was in our original design, was try to expand. And then the second was additional beds at some point in time. And then also we have the ability to add for our imaging radiology if we want to do like, um, CT, MRIs, uh, because of the growth. Uh, so that's part of our master planning. So what you'll see here, the intent of... So, anyway, the intent of the... The addition was to carry the same roofline and to definitely carry all the same exterior product that we have. The goal was to not make it look like an addition and to definitely carry the original themes of that. And so the three thousand square foot, the big space for that is we're trying to enhance the place for the staff. We'll also go, we call it a respite area for our staff because of the nature of the... Our business there. And so the cafeteria and we have a respite room. Uh, we have the ability for, uh, the covered patio to sit outside, get some fresh air. And we ended up with a lot of glazing to incorporate the natural light. The design intent of the space was to create an extension to the, as you guys know well, the beautiful outdoors here. And...
Are you sharing that screen so Teresa can see it?
Yeah. Teresa, can you confirm that you're seeing it? Just a thumbs up.
Yep, I see it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I just wanted to make sure.
I can run along for a while, you know. Anyway, so, um, if you want to go to the next slide, maybe. This is another perspective of it. Uh, the only lighting that we really changed there was that we have some downlights underneath the canopy that are the thirty-five hundred, the warm light. And then you can see the window revised matches all the existing windows, trying to carry our same, uh, theme. And then we did have a covered patio with some lighting off the back, which is a staff entrance, shipping and... Not shipping, receiving, but deliveries are made there. And so we created, uh, the canopy, obviously, to create dry spots underneath the doorways so when you come out. Um, healthcare also has a tremendous amount of concern about security and safety, unfortunately. And so these lights, uh, the doors and the windows you'll see on the other side, those are really so that when you walk outside at night, you're able to see outside to make sure that you're safe before you go to your car. Uh, that was some of the other, uh, design elements. Uh, through the earlier comments, we haven't changed the parking. And, uh, the landscape, uh, is matching all the existing landscape that's out there. Go ahead, the next one. You can see the space to the left here is an image of the cafeteria. And so it's doing two purposes. You've got a cafeteria for staff, visitors, but then you're also doing the meal prep for the inpatient, um, population. And this will give you an idea of the respite area. We did go with a two-story vault. Uh, it was mentioned about the thousand square feet. Uh, second floor, that's our mechanical room, uh, for all of our indoor air equipment and all the mechanical equipment that feeds the space. We put them inside what we call penthouses or insides because of longevity. They just last a lot longer than trying to be on the roof. And to be honest, we don't really like the look of some of them on the roof. Um, they don't always look the best. So, uh, with that, I know... And this just gives another image of a perspective as you walk into the space. So with that, I think we're really here to answer any questions and go from there.
Maybe get another couple of steps here and then we'll come back to your questions.
Perfect.
All right?
Thank you.
Um, Greg, were there any written correspondence at all, any letters of support or otherwise?
No.
No comment. Um, now we'll open it up for public comment. Is there public, uh, Zooms that want to speak to it?
And I can see the list. I do not see anybody coming off of mute or any comments in the comment section, which is your clue to change that if you'd like to speak.
I'll ask one more time. Any public comment, uh, on this particular project? Okay, hearing none, the public comment is closed. And so now, um, we'll open it up for, uh, board questions of the applicant. And if you don't mind, I'll start with Teresa since she's online. And wherever you are, you're not in Syracuse, I don't know where you are, but...
Teresa, do you have any questions of the applicant or the city? Yes. Uh, I, I at first wondered if there would be a decrease in, um, parking. And then I saw later in the report, there's not, and that's great. But you just mentioned a, um, uh, the light from the end of the building, those windows will glow outward. Is that right?
Yeah, they have what I refer to as more of an ambient look. Uh, we do have a, I don't...
We have the existing parking lot lighting will remain.
Right.
Yeah, so...
Lighting from inside the building out? I want to make sure I understand the question, Teresa.
Yeah, so I was wondering if... I, I can't recall what that looks like today, but you do have parking lot lighting. So I'm wondering why... Why the inside building lights need to remain on at night?
Oh, it's really the... The light levels would be relatively low at night, but we also have the... The film, the lighting levels of the window. I don't think you'll be able to see the lighting on the inside of the building because of the window colors. You know, you can... It's kind of a one... One direct... It's not like you're going to... Like it's clear glass. It's more of a film... I don't want to call it a film, but it's the color of the glazing.
So it's not... It's not adding a lot of lighting onto the foot traffic you expect out there. It's not really... It doesn't add much. You already have parking lot lighting, right?
Right, you already have parking lot. And the lighting I was talking about was underneath the canopy, so I hope I didn't... I don't believe you'll get any, uh, light carryover from inside the building to outside.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
That...
That's all I had, Al.
Okay, thanks. Jeff?
Um, the only question I had had to do with stormwater management. And I noticed that part of the construction area was removing some infrastructure real relative to storm drainage. Can you... Can you explain a little bit about how stormwater is managed on the... On the facility?
Some will go back in memory, but I'll have Shannon jump in. But, uh, the way it's managed now is we put it into a retention area. And then from the retention area, then it gets carried out to the system. So we have to capture so much of it into a retention. And the area that we put the building in was already just, uh, you know, lawn. So now we're taking that and building the building. And the rest of it is still going to the retention area that made the calculations. But I'd let Jeremy maybe add to that, too, but that's what I believe is happening.
And the retention area is to the north?
Yes, it is to the north.
And then you said it goes after it's in the retention area, it goes to where?
I believe it goes back into a storm system. Is that correct, Jeremy? Do you know? And I don't want to misspeak if you know.
Well, I don't... I don't know that... I don't know the answer to that since, uh, we're fairly new at doing this with the city of Red Lodge. So I wasn't involved with the original...
I can get the details of that.
Didn't Brian Hannah address that question?
He did.
And...
And I believe that...
And I don't remember... And I don't remember exactly what it was, but he was satisfied with the answer.
I think he said that it, it doesn't change anything.
Yeah, doesn't change anything.
And I'm, I'm not the engineer on it, but the, the way they calculate is the perk rate. And um, the amount of area we're changing in the roof line, it did have a significant impact on it.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the, there's a stormwater system, pipe system on that end of town.
Yeah.
I, I believe there is. When we put it in, you know, we extended all utilities out there. And I believe the, the stormwater was part of the sewer and the water supply. I think that's. But I'll find out for sure. I can make it home now. I still know the engineer that did it.
I know Brian asked that specific question, and I don't believe the detail of it, and he seems satisfied with the answer.
That's all I had.
Honestly, I, I think it's a wonderful addition and long time coming. And um, I noticed that it was for the uh, for the patients in, in the uh, swing bed. As well as the staff and clients, so people can go in there and buy a cup of coffee if they want.
Absolutely.
Or if they really love hospital food.
Yeah, well, we. But yeah, it's also a place, you know, what's happening in healthcare is you're really wanting some people to come there early on. So not only when they're sick, they're building relationships. A lot of people that are aging, even though they're healthy, they like to go in there and start meeting the staff. And working and just, you know, building that relationship. And so, later on, if they need care, they, they've already established that. And so, we see that at a lot of our other facilities, that several community members really embed themselves as part of that, you know, ability to enjoy it. And we haven't had that, so we've.
Out of curiosity, uh, like Billings Clinic up in Billings. Um, there are some ready-made food as well as you can go up to the window and order. Will it be the same type of deal?
Yeah, so we refer to that, kind of there, there are several clients that you're dealing or catering to. Uh, you have the folks that eat there every day, so you have to have a large variety, because they're eating at the same place every day. And then we got what we call the grabbing goals, the on-the-go people that, I got five minutes, I want to go grab something, go back to my desk. And then you have the folks that want to come in here that are, hey, uh, my loved one's in here getting care. I need to kill 30 minutes. And they want to have a space to sit, you know, sit down. One of the rooms to the side is a, a, a respite room. It's got a fireplace in it where you, you can see we're using the club seating. So people can get comfortable, they'll have the wifi. And it's ideal is just to get them out of the lobbies and the waiting areas and to be able to spread out a little bit.
Nice. No piano?
No piano yet. We, we have pianos and fireplaces.
I've been seeing some things in, in various news reporting, not necessarily a, a newspaper. But maybe even on Facebook, I don't know, where it's mentioning other things besides just the kitchen. Like potential future um, use of an area for infusion therapy and that kind of thing. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so uh, it is accurate. We are looking at another project inside the facility that obviously we bring forward. And that is to enhance our infusion program and service lines. And then, like I said earlier, we're also looking at different um, imaging equipment. Uh, the city's growing, the demand's there. And really, it's all driven around keeping care local and making sure that we can provide the care. I think infusion model right now is five, five infusion base. And so, we still have to go to the board for approval. It's still premature, but it definitely is in the planning session. And there's some, um, you know, people interested in fundraising and donating to that. Your best. Thank you.
Okay. John?
I'm good. Thank you.
Any comments or Greg, do you have anything? So now we'll turn it over to any specific. So now, any rebuttal on the, anything you want to add on the behalf of the applicant that we brought up?
No, absolutely not. We're very, very pleased. So thank you.
Uh, my only question was, you gave us a timeline of, of when this work would be done. And I have a completion. What is your completion date?
Well, I think that we heard today is February, March 1st. Uh, we spent a lot of time today, unfortunately, talking about how we're going to get it in the dry before winter. But uh, that's our first goal. And uh, we're trying to get the roof done by September, so we're in the dry and proceed. But I think it, it's a still moving target, but probably uh, into January, through, through February.
I will have to say this application and the report is pretty complete. I wish all of them were straightforward, is what you're saying.
I got a really good team. I can't take credit for that, Al.
Sure you can. You have your team.
Okay, uh, any other comments you want to make on the project? All right. Um, Jeremy, is anything you want to add on the project?
Nope, I think I'm good. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board members?
I was just going to ask, you, you talked about future expansion. Is that going to be into, interior to the existing facility? Or is you going to be adding?
It's, it could be a combination. And so, just, you know, the, the mindset of planning is driven off the volumes and programs. And so, obviously, the, the local governance board here and then, and the CEO Abby, they do just an awesome job of thinking about what service lines, what specialties. What do we want to keep home, all that stuff. And so, they're busy doing that. And so, when I get involved is, once they've established their growth of what they want to do. And then myself and my team start to put together the different scenarios and options. And what we call right sizing is based off of the volumes. So right now, they're going through all that as a system to understand. And that's where the infusion's coming up, is that we have a need for additional infusion. And right now, we have two bays, and they want to go to five. So they've based it off of, you know, either the amount of people that have to leave the community to go do it. And what we potentially would have for the new volumes in the future. So I don't want to say it's kind of complex, but it's really, you know, starting with the baseline.
Anything else?
Yeah, all right. So some of the expansion will be adding to the building?
Could be. If we ended up doing additional beds, we would need to add. If we did end up doing additional imaging space, we probably would need to add. Because I think right now, we're doing a portable MRI, and there's been talk about, do we ever do a form of permanent building MRI? Unfortunately, that's sometimes tied to volume.
Teresa, anything?
No, nothing more. Thanks.
Jeremy, anything?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, um, at this point then, uh, if there's no other questions or discussion, uh, we have three motions I need. I need a, a motion to adopt or not adopt the staff report. Then I'll need a motion to approve the conditional use. And then I'll need a motion to approve or deny the design review. So I need a motion first on the staff report.
I move to adopt staff report CU 2024 dash 21 and RLDR 2024 dash 20 as findings of fact.
Be a second.
A second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion on that?
I thought it was pretty normal.
Okay. Greg, roll call please.
Greg?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Oldson? Toisey?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
You, Benedetto?
Yes.
Blumer?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion on the conditional use permit.
I move to approve the conditional use permit CU 2024 dash 21 for an expansion greater than 2,000 square feet. To an existing healthcare facility building located on lots 30 through 33 of block seven of the Red Lodge Country Club Estates. Located in section 15. Township 7 South, range 20 East, PMM, subject to the following conditions of approval, which I believe there are 11.
Yeah, there were. 11 conditions.
Yes, subject to the 11 conditions.
Second, second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Greg?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Oldson? Toisey?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
You, Benedetto?
Yes.
Blumer?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion on design review.
I move to approve the design review permit DR 2024 dash 20. For an expansion greater than 2,000 square feet to an existing healthcare facility building. Located on lots 30 through 33 of block seven of the Red Lodge Country Club Estates. Located in section 15 Township 7 South, range 20 East, PMM, subject to the 11 conditions.
A second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I think it, it looks perfect. You won't even know that it was added on. And um, it'll be a great, a great addition to our, our community.
Thank you.
I know that the swing beds have really suffered and actually the staff as well, because they were really dependent on the food that was coming in. I think they're more than the swing beds, but nonetheless.
Another lunch spot.
Yeah, my son-in-law will be there.
We used to go to lunch all the time at the clinic when I was at Billings. So anyway, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, Greg, roll call please.
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Oldson? Toisey?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
You, Benedetto?
Yes.
Blumer?
Yes.
Okay, we're good to go.
Thank you very much.
And I, I appreciate your professionalism and, and your attention to detail. Made our job and Brian Hannah's job, who was our building inspector's job, a lot easier. I appreciate it, so. I wish you well.
Thank you.
Safe travels back to Billings.
Go back to the hot bar.
Yeah, you can watch the thermometer on your car going up.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Sure we'll see each other soon again, maybe.
Your regards to Derek.
Yep, will do.
Okay, um. Moving on here, I think, uh, under all business, uh, that, that Kevin is, is on, online, is that right?
I am here, Mr. Chair.
So before we get into the growth policy discussion, can you kind of give us an update on where we are on the master plan?
Definitely. Uh, I got, there was an email that was sent out, looks on the 16th from Chad. Chad kind of gave the, the little bit of a background of where we're at. And he is looking at staff availability and possible locations for the focus group meetings in September. Uh, so that he can provide potential dates as requested from the, um, was that the June 25th meeting? Uh, he said that he has some dates to consider. But it may be the next, next meeting that will bring them, bring them forward. So that's kind of the, the only update that I really have for you.
I mean, the location here in Red Lodge really only have two options, don't we? The Senior Center or the Roosevelt Center. Is that right?
That, that can handle.
That can handle that?
That type of.
Had to be one of those two, doesn't it?
Sometimes pizza co-backroom does stuff.
So, yeah, that would be smaller, but a pizza co-backroom, I think, could be enough. But I, I would hope that we could get the Roosevelt, uh, or the Senior Center, like those.
Yeah, the Senior Center is probably a little bit more reasonable.
Yeah. So if that's on his, on his radar, um, Kevin. If it's not on his radar, put it on his radar, okay?
Got that written down. I will provide that to him when I speak to him next. I believe he's out of town either today or the rest of this week. So.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions on the downtown master plan from the, the board?
I've had, um, an inquiry from the organization formerly known as BRTA, which is now Bear Tooth Trails. And they wanted to know who they needed to contact to make sure they were included in the process.
Greg. Contact Greg, is that right? To make sure they're completed and included in this process?
For the downtown area?
For the downtown master plan?
Yeah.
I think we would contact Great West.
Oh, that's, it's Great West because they have.
Yeah, all right, have them contact Kevin.
Okay.
I thought you, I thought you were the intermediary, but.
I mean, I can be if, if my.
I would prefer they contact Greg and then let him pass the message on, just to kind of keep.
Take a point, well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Okay, um, let's move on to growth policy. And you and I exchanged an email earlier, um, I made a decision on it. They, we got to page 10 on our last meeting. And the question was, he's made the adjustments that we'd accept, uh, that we had recommended, one through 10. And wanted to know if we wanted to go back and go through that. And I said, no. Let's keep going from where we are. Um, and then, once we're all the way through it one time, go back through it again. So.
Check our notes. I like that.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Kevin, the floor is yours.
Right. So if it's all right with the board for comments that were made that were regarding, I think we talked about this last time, regarding spelling errors, anything like that. We're, we're fine with just kind of glossing over those.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're into content here and we're starting on page 10. Is that correct?
That is correct. I figured we'd start right at the top of local services. So if it's all right, I'm going to share my screen here. And let me know if you can see it.
Teresa, can you see that?
All right, so we'll start with the first.
Can you enlarge it?
Uh, yes.
After the notes on the side, yeah.
Yeah. Is that, is that good?
Can you go another click? That's good. Okay.
So we'll start with the first one we had. It was a, a comment from Jeff. Uh, you can see it's highlighted for the word disposal, say changing it to uh, solid waste management. Instead of uh, just leaving it solid waste disposal. Is that something everybody would be on, on board with?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, easy enough. And so then moving down, we have had a couple of comments for, uh, that's under sidewalks here in the, the local service goal one. The first one being Teresa's comment, adding the word crosswalks as well as sidewalks. To kind of encompass both, which I do agree with. We can knock those both out in one.
So it says, assess and inventory the city sidewalks and crosswalks?
It would actually be the goal. So be, ensure that the city residents are provided with well-maintained sidewalks and crosswalks.
Ah, okay.
Right, and so then the second one for there. See if we can. Let me see. Looks like it's not popping up. So, um, moving on to the local service objective B for that LS1. We got a couple there too. Uh, Sandy, looked like you had a comment. You were confused about uh, transportation alternative grant funding. And so that's, it's a grant that you can pursue through MDT. And it encompasses different like multi-mo- multimodal, um, means of transportation. So it could encompass sidewalks. It kind of has to fall under like safe routes to school and/or trails. So there is, there is an option there for sidewalks.
So are you going to add sidewalks?
It, it should already be covered. So under the, the, the local service objective for pursuing uh, the TA grant funding as the objective.
Yeah.
And we could even potentially move that to a goal, because that kind of is a goal versus an, an objective. And we could kind of make the, change that to make it kind of a little overarching. So we might be able to, to work a couple of different goals out of, out of something else. Does that sound a little bit better? Because that's a pretty achievable goal to look for a TA grant.
Okay.
All right, and if I look away or take a second, it's because I'm writing notes here. Right, and. So then another comment from Teresa on that same one said add, uh, a, a third objective there for creating a plan for improvements in places needing most attention. Incorporate plan for improvement in the CIP where best fitted. Once again, we probably could work that into an action if we're changing the objective to kind of capture multiple different things. Does that sound, sound on par?
Yeah, it's just a how, right? So if you're already adding the action, it's just like, okay, let's, let's do that and prioritize.
Yeah, we had, we had a pretty extensive conversation amongst, uh, the planners here at Great West and kind of talking about how a lot of these, a lot of goal or objectives that we had written in the past that we'd kind of maybe had used for examples really are goals. So there might be a few on here that we're going to run into that are the similar, kind of a similar thing, uh, so we'll just kind of address those as they come up. And we had one more from Jeff on that, said add an objective that all new development will incorporate sidewalks into development plans consistent with the active transportation plan goals and objectives.
Do, do we need to change our zoning aga- again, not the zoning, but the, the code, uh, where we, these floating sidewalks are bothering me. Because, yeah, new development will never get new sidewalks if there's, if they're adjacent to a property that doesn't have any sidewalks, yet this says all new development will have.
It likely could, uh, potentially change what needs to be set forth in the design standards for, uh, subdivision review. So that, that's something to keep in mind, uh, definitely could still work out a good goal, goal there, and then revisit it again in, in five years when the growth policy gets looked at again. So keep in mind that these, that though we're, we're putting in these goals, it's not like they have to all be met, you know, in the next year or two. So they can always be revisited, so if it is something that, that the city is contemplating or, or the residents think is an issue, we can put it in and then always check down the lines, see how, how it's turned out.
Um, I would, I would recommend you leave it in just because after you get through this growth policy stuff, we are going to be going through right, uh, the subdivision regulation updates, because they have not been updated since 2011. Um, and I think your design and development standards need a lot of work in the street department. Um, and so, you know, typically we see for city environments that all new subdivision development is curb, gutter, sidewalk, boulevards, paved streets. Um, it, it, the idea is you want, you want the subdivision, it's a vision of what you want Red Lodge to look like, right? And so, understanding you've got new Red Lodge with development versus old Red Lodge, right? So you're still dealing with old Red Lodge and, and no sidewalks and stuff and as you go, but you want new stuff to have sidewalks, right? And so, that, that's kind of the intent, I think, that Kevin's getting at, is that if it's in the growth policy, then you have some backup to use, uh, when you go into your subdivision regulation, uh, updates to say, hey, this is what we're going to require. That makes sense?
My intent there was really to address, make sure it's addressed in sub, subdivision review and, and maybe, maybe we need to sort of separate out old town versus new town a little bit, just to accommodate, you know, that, that within the older part of town, there's few and it, a lot of, um, sidewalks are not connected, but I think our active transportation plan really is trying to address walkability and that really needs to be reflected in any new development.
And one other thing, yeah, um, one of the things that was taken into consideration several years ago where we put the park in the zoning ordinance, I guess it was, that said a sidewalk wouldn't be required if it didn't have anything to go to. When we were looking at that, we were also keeping in mind, um, the affordability. And if a sidewalk had no place to go, we were not requiring the person who was putting in the new area to build a sidewalk and it not to go anywhere, because it just adds cost without adding utility. Um, and that kind of thing can change with the economy, but I think we need to have a discussion about it when we get to the housing. Rather than just, right, we got any sidewalks everywhere.
Well, I think, I think my intent there is to focus on new subdivisions and you would have connectivity as part of a requirement for them, as opposed to old town. So.
We have.
I think making that distinction between old town and new town is, is maybe a good point. The other thing that we did, because we were noticing that because of the way we rewrote our, our requirements for sidewalks, that if a sidewalk, if there was an existing sidewalk to one of the adjacent blocks, that we would require a sidewalk in the next block.
Right.
To connect to that.
Connected, yeah.
So that, those are some things that we've learned and as we've implemented this, the, uh, sidewalk requirement over the last couple of years.
Right.
We have to start thinking that, that spires will probably come back to us.
What's that?
We have to start thinking that spires will come back to us with a subdivision plan and to connect to Diamond C. Now, Diamond C and Red Lodge Country Club Estates are really big on not having sidewalks. So. I'm wondering if we're going to, we need to consider whether or not we're going to require spires to have sidewalks.
Guess why wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Well.
If we have a transportation plan that's, that's promoting walkability, why are we putting pedestrians onto a street to walk as opposed to a sidewalk?
In a subdivision with 300.
And this, and Diamond C and those guys are grandfathered anyway, we can't.
No, I know that they're grandfathered in, I'm just, um.
Yeah, I, I think we need to do it right.
So I would recommend, I would recommend that you change that to maybe say just su- new subdivision development or something like that. Uh, you know, shall or must contain sidewalks. Uh, the only other thing I'll add is that, so typically what we do is, it, it, the sidewalks are typically required in subdivision regulations, but they're not typically required to be constructed by the developer. Um, because typically what happens is you have, um, you know, you, construction workers going in and out of those lots, building houses and stuff like that, they're just going to break up that sidewalk. Um, and so what we do is we make that part of the building permit process, that they have to build the sidewalk with the house. Or, or whatever they're constructing on the lot. Um, now, different places do it different ways, uh, some places allow that, but they also require the developer to bond for sidewalks and that way, um, you know, if they, you know, if, if the houses aren't built out in a certain amount of time, then, you know, the developer needs to finish out those sidewalks, so you don't have those islands. Um, so there's multiple ways we could do it, um, we just, that's just something we need to think about when we get into the subdivision regulation updates.
Okay, so what have we decided here on this language? We're talking about LS1, local service objectives B, correct?
That is correct.
B?
Yeah, well, I'd be adding, I guess this would be adding a C, a third one.
Correct, B, and this, and tell me what the C is going to be.
Well, that's, so my, my thought, Jeremy, I don't know what you think about this, but if we already have a goal regarding, uh, may, you know, updating the subdivision regulations, well then shouldn't, should this action really be moved over to land use instead?
Uh, I think you could, I think you can put it here too. Um, I think you could just say in here, update subdivision regulations to require sidewalk, uh, sidewalk development with all new subdivisions or something like that.
I like that. That would be, that would be C.
Correct.
Are you okay with that, Sandy?
Yep.
Um, yes. Two?
Perfect, all right.
Okay, so we're moving on to LS2 now, right?
Uh, yeah, that, that is all those ones, so LS2, we got a couple for LS2A. Um, one is Sandy made a comment to, to add maintain and improve existing parks and trails. So that seems pretty, pretty straightforward, I can make, make that switch.
All right, we all agree with that, I think, all right?
And then the second one from Teresa said perhaps start by developing creekside park, discuss with parks board to see if we may plan together. I think that's for B, not for A.
Yeah.
So.
So we want to change and add parks, okay? Is that right, Teresa?
That's right, that was B.
All right.
All right, uh, so then moving on, the next one.
I've got it. Okay, it was also, was that C that Jeff wanted to add active transportation plan?
Was on, uh, LS1.
Well, I've got it here under LS2 as well.
You see, oh, there it is, okay, yep, that's for LS, yeah, Jeff made that comment for LS2D.
C, C, uh.
Looks like D, yep, D.
All right, all right, D, okay.
That can get changed, so then that looks like it's all for LS2, so LS3, we got a comment to add for LS3C to add and new subdivisions. Along with neighborhoods. Uh.
Yeah.
And I don't know, this, maybe this is a little nitpicky, but do we take out neighborhoods and just add new subdivisions instead, instead of having both of them? Or what, or how do we, how do we think for that? Because it also kind of does come down to, uh, design standards for subdivisions as well.
I think, I think. I think, I'm sorry, Teresa, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just saying, it's not just, I, I, it's not just sidewalks, I mean, it's open-ended, talking about transportation alternatives, so I don't think you can just, um, change it altogether. I mean, it's not, it, I, I think you were asking about neighborhoods and saying new subdivisions because we were talking about sidewalks, but there are other flow-through alternatives for transportation, not just sidewalks. So I don't think we should say just new subdivisions.
So keep neighborhoods and new subdivisions for, keep both of them.
Yeah, I think so.
I, I see that she wanted to add through the city's main corridor, but I'm not sure where she wanted to put that.
I don't think it's necessary.
This is, so Jeff, what is, uh, what do you think, since this was your comment about adding and new subdivisions?
Oh, yeah, that, well, my point there is that, that the goal is to, uh, increase walkability and connectivity and, and, and I think it's important to have neighborhoods and subdivisions. To me, for neighborhoods refers to what's already, the over, already developed part of the community and new subdivisions refers to what's going to be part of.
Right.
I see the difference.
Yeah, we could add, we could add existing neighborhoods. Do we want to add the word existing in there?
No, I, well, I don't think we need to.
Okay.
Susan, you had a comment?
Yeah, it's a clarification more than anything. Um, we do have some neighborhoods in the, the, where, where we have trails that are not sidewalks. And some of those trails work fairly well and provide some level of connectivity. Um, some Red Lodge Mountain State and Diamond C are examples of that. There is a trail built along the top of the bench that is dirt, basically, but it's dirt with bitinite in it, and so it's not dirt that just turns into mud, it's dirt that's good for walking. And the neighborhood really likes that, um, and they use it frequently, but because, again, it's dirt rather than a sidewalk, um, it's not anywhere near as expensive to build. So, um, I guess my point is for, when you're building a new subdivision, it may make sense to use the word sidewalk, but if you're talking about everything in general, a trail can be more than one thing.
Yeah, Su- Suzie, that's why I like the word, you know, the transportation alternatives, because we're not just talking about sidewalks.
Right.
Right.
Okay, um, I, if I can make a quick comment here, we're all looking at different versions of this thing. I'm on my laptop, Sandy's got paper, Jeff's got paper. Um, John is looking at the screen. We need to be real clear when we're talking about these. Right now, I know we're in LU, LU3, but just so we're on the same page, are we talking about A, B, C, D, or the combination of them? So just so that we can all stay focused on this, um, let's just be real clear about which, um, sentence or paragraph we're talking to, and while I'm doing this also, Danae has, has told me that if any of us want hard paper copies of this material, the city will supply it for us and we just put up the Monday before meeting. Um, because, um, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here, using the same data, um. So. Carrying on here, we're right now in LU3 and are we talking about the collective of A, B, C, and D, or are we on one in particular?
I thought we were talking about C.
I thought we were talking about.
C, right.
Well, he's talking B and you're talking C.
Well, I think that they were talking about LS3C.
Yeah.
So that it said neighborhoods and subdivisions should consider flow-through transportation alternatives.
Yeah.
Is, that's my notes, is that correct?
On LU3?
On C.
C.
LS3.
Every plan, unit development with varying types of housing and housing density, that's what I've got.
LF3?
LU3.
Not LU, LF.
Well, I'm the one that screwed up.
We're on local services.
Page, page 10.
Page 10.
Okay.
You kept saying LU and I thought that, oh, it was just.
Well, that's why I brought it up, because if, if I can understand it, everybody can.
It's LF.
Or you're the only one on a different page. Well, at least.
No wonder.
Yeah, that, that really does create.
My only comment on this one is that I don't know if should consider is a, is strong enough wording. Um, should consider just tells the developer that, hey, you should consider this, but it doesn't have any teeth to necessarily require it. And, I mean, as we know from previous discussions, your subdivision regulations currently require interconnectivity. And so I would, maybe we could wordsmith that a little bit better, instead of saying should consider, um, you know, shall be required to provide, or, you know, something a little stronger than should consider, because I've seen, I've just seen other places get wrapped up in that language and a develop, trust me, a developer will latch on to that language and say, well, your growth policy doesn't require it, it just says we should look at, right?
I like the shall, yeah, I like the.
What about shall plan?
Shall provide flow-through transportation.
Yeah, I like that, shall provide flow, that makes it very clear that this is what the city of Red Lodge wants.
Yeah.
And, and, and it corresponds with what you already require in your subdivision regulations.
Are we going to use the language new subdivisions or, or in, inserted that in there or not?
We did neighborhoods and subdivisions.
Neighborhoods and new subdivisions.
Okay, here's a, I'm going to throw a little kink in this. Alpine Basin was not a subdivision, there's a PUD.
Right.
It's a neighborhood. It's a neighborhood.
But it's new. It's more like nor, new housing development, I, I hate to say subdivisions, then Alpine Basin says, well, that doesn't include us.
Let me ask you this.
Good point.
Jeremy, does neighborhood include subdivision?
Um, I mean, I think neighborhood is fairly broad, right, um, I think, I think it could encompass, uh, if you wanna be more specific, you could just say new development shall consist, you know, shall provide. And that, that could mean, you know, individual lot development, you know, that goes through zoning review through conditional use permit, that could mean a subdivision, um, right, that could, that could be a little bit more clear, um.
I kinda like that, are you okay with that, new development?
Yeah.
Shall provide.
Shall provide flow-through transportation alternatives? Is that right?
I think that's good.
I would make a, maybe a comment and with LS three, the goal is, right, expanded a little bit to say increased walkability and connectivity in this city between neighborhoods and the central business district. I think that's some of the wording that comes out of Active Transportation Plan, but I think that would help at least broadening that goal out a little bit to describe what components within the city we're talking about.
Yeah.
I like. Say that again Jeff, repeat that, can you repeat that?
Yeah, I would say increased walkability and, and connectivity of the city between neighborhoods and the central business district.
I kinda like that, Susan? Huh?
I like the way it's worded, um, I'm thinking of examples, and of course, there're gonna be um, some practical exceptions that go in there based on how, how wide the current street is and what's already up on, what would have been the sidewalk, but in gen, if that's a general goal, that's probably.
John? You okay with all this?
He's like, huh?
It's a little overwhelming to start with, isn't it?
It is extremely.
So you didn't, no, but that's alright, that's, hello, you hear that? I did, noted.
You don't have a copy of this?
No, how did that happen? Cause you were on the distribution.
He's like, he's been here two weeks, okay?
No, but I, I just sent him out.
It was my bad, I should have, yeah, I should have asked before, and too, so it's not just that.
Cause you were on the distribution list.
No, you missed the list.
It might have been before that.
It was before.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we done with LS three?
But the update one, we just sent the last couple of days.
I didn't get an update.
Uh, I didn't.
Oh man.
I didn't get the update, that's why I'm still dealing with the original, this is the original.
We got an email, but there was no attachment to it, the stating that we were gonna have a discussion.
Okay, where, that divest, Greg, somehow or another, we gotta make sure. And so, I'm gonna divest a little bit here Kevin, cause we're having a bit of a communication problem, um. Sometimes when there's a long chain of emails, my firewall will reject it, if it's a really long chain. So what I'm gonna ask is when we're distributing this stuff like this, you make it an original and not add it to a chain.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Um, and so, the original to the planning board members and then firewalls should.
Yeah.
Would it be recommended or wise to keep the subject lines at least somewhat similar keywords, so that when you do your search, you're gonna find the multiple conversations?
Yeah, um, I'll leave that up to individuals that they can do that within their management, but I just know this, where there's a long chain, my firewall will reject it.
Too much discussion, huh?
Yeah. Okay, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, seems like, seems like everyone's email bounces stuff back to me.
And the other thing you can do, um, sorry Kevin, uh, the other thing you can do is you can go into your, um, systems and then put in, uh, allow emails, like I've, I've, I've done that with all of you and Greg and Jeremy, so that whatever you send me, it comes regardless.
When, when you do get a notified kickback, what is your course of action right now?
I put it in as a trusted, as a trusted. Whatever they send regardless, it comes through.
So, so he's saying is he does get kickbacks, but it's different, like you'll get one kickback one time, he'll get kicked back, so what do you do when you do get a kickback? So if it says it can't be delivered, I'll make a, I'll basically make a new thread and send it to the one person directly?
In fairness to John, he's sitting there going, what the hell, you know, because he doesn't have the data and that's not fair to him.
Well, and I think what happened on this one is Kevin made the edits really quickly, and so it got sent out before John was.
But I got one just a few, a little while ago.
Yeah, that added Jeff comments on page like forty, so.
Okay, sorry, we got that straight, are we clear now what we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay Kevin, back to you.
Thank you, so.
LSU four?
Pick it back up, yep, moving on to LS four, LS four C. We have one comment from Jeff and it says, add an objective to provide for virtual public attendance at meetings by utilizing improved technology, such as an owl or improved audio and visual capabilities.
Yeah, my, my point is there, logging into virtually to city council or any of the meetings, I never hear anybody at the, any of the discussion at the table.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's just really poor, the current setup, and, and I think be a good objective to improve it and adopt the current, better technology.
I certainly agree with that.
And what, and I don't know, cause I got several reports of that, so you may notice there's two separate sets of mics in front of you. The Zoom, I don't know where the mics were set up in, in, in the hub of last week, I wonder, cause I've got that report from a couple different, you did your transcription from the original Zoom though, you didn't have to go to the backup system. Correct, or did you get?
For your members.
You did it to the online recording, okay, it's on your website. Okay, so you did it from our website, but I know that some people had issues with that, um. The problem is that system, it, it, it's, it's uncompressed, it's a much, much larger, we don't have the ability to make that available.
We can, we can have this discussion.
On how?
I think we need to put this in here and then we can figure out how to solve the problem.
So that would be D?
D or that, or we could rewrite a different objective and then put that as an action.
Yeah.
Cause that's a pretty easy action to improve the, the system.
Sounds interesting.
Well, it could be, it could be C or you could add D.
C is just a, a response.
Add a D. Huh?
I think a D would be.
I think D would be better as well. Okay Kevin?
That sounds great, got that written down, so then moving on to the next one, looks like it is on LS six A. Uh, Sandy had a comment about no programs being related to lost or abandoned animals. I will preface this, this was a carryover from the twenty twenty, uh, growth policy. So I wasn't entirely sure what, if there were any programs, we can cut it out if we don't find it necessary.
I don't know.
We don't have any, um, we don't, all we really have is kind of a Facebook group for lost or abandoned animals. We don't have an animal shelter, we don't have any city official dealing with live animals that are lost or abandoned. So I don't, I mean, I'd love having this in here, but it, it means nothing.
Yeah.
And cost sharing is probably not good.
And, like I said, it was a carryover, we can, we don't have to keep it, just cause it's in this draft, we could ax the whole, the whole goal and objective if it just doesn't merit anything.
And I did ask, uh, the chief of police about a plan for, uh, well, for dead animals in particular, and it depends on whether they're, um, domestic or wild and actually where they're deceased, I guess one of the policemen found a, uh, a young moose that drowned in Rock Creek and rather than leave it there, dragged it out, put it on the hood of his car and drove it out of town to some unknown place, so they don't actually have a plan that you could put your finger on to handle that, so I'm kind of leaning towards removing LS six. How does everybody else feel about something that we really just don't have?
I think LS six as a goal is okay, I think the implementation of it is a little bit different, and maybe it's more from the standpoint of providing the information to the public onto how to deal with it, so in the case of wild animals, the, the contact is to Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks. In the case of domestic animals, isn't there a humane society locally that deals with that or?
Not that I know of, but it's, but it's not the city's responsibility, and I think you're right, it's just information.
Say again Theresa?
I, I think that's true, it's not, it's not the city's responsibility, it's a matter of informing, I, I like what Jeff was saying and that I think you need to craft the, the way LS six is worded, provide the community with, uh, I would say at least, uh, response, um, information about, uh, disposal of deceased animals, and that's it. About the care for lost or abandoned and all that other stuff, I don't even know what the city would do about that.
But the fact that this is a growth policy, can we say that it's an objective for down the road?
How, how much bandwidth does anybody have? I don't know. It's a matter of what, what would the city, how, well, let's ask the mayor, I mean, how much can the city take on, I mean, where does it, where do you draw the line, right?
Your honor.
So. It was interesting, I, I made a note after Jeff's comment of opportunity to, to get, disseminate some information, so I have heard some untruths spoken in this discussion, however, I would not have been able to comment otherwise three weeks ago, but, but in my unique position, I've learned all sorts of things, and this is why your comment stuck out. So for instance, our trash services does include disposal of animals.
Wow.
So if there's a dead deer in your front yard, you can go stick it in the garbage can.
Ooh.
And it'll go away, now in the particular case that came up, this was a dead deer that had crawled in underneath the deck before, after, oh, it was dead, but he got it out with a skid steer. I called the trash services, they came by and he just dumped it, so he, he had it in the skid steer, fifteen minutes later, we had a truck in his yard and he dumped it in there. But that is part of our trash services, and to your point, we don't communicate that. I think that the general communication is you call dispatch and dispatch says, do we call city or do we call county, do we call, you know, that's um, wildlife is basically if it's injured and whatnot, but now we're, so we're, we're talking about two different things, we're talking about disposal of dead animals and, and what to do with lost animals, but I think, and, 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 and so back to your growth policy where you're setting your goals and yours out there, um, but I already took down, we've, we have the ability to get, we have ability that people don't know exists, and I only know because I have the ability to reach out and some, ask some very specific questions.
So we ought to put some language in there to, that, in the case of a dead animal, they contact who?
Well, does, does this document say that, or does it just say the city needs to, to provide direction and information?
The city needs to provide direction, and that's, that's Jeff's point.
Yeah, and that's, and I, and I think so.
And I'm okay with that.
So provide, so that the goal says, provide the community with responsible care for lost, abandoned and diseased animals.
Diseased or deceased?
Oh, deceased.
Sounds like beetle.
Feel sorry.
Recently diseased.
Ensure the city has a plan for deceased animals to alleviate any public health risk for the citizens, I think that's a good sentence.
That's new.
I think, and I, and I think that's, that's the appropriate way for being sure that the city has something in place.
So that's B, so what about lost or abandoned animals, that's A.
And that's as discussed, cost sharing.
Do you think the city has a role to do that?
Well, so that's the thing, the whole sentence there is to provide the community with responsible care, but that's, that's costly for lost or abandoned at least, maybe, maybe we've solved deceased animals, but I don't know that that's, i- is that really an overall goal of city is to take on the care?
How about?
I would say we can't take on the care just because of money, to quote, to quote Commissioner Bullock, there's a certain advantage to being broke and that, that is you're limited to do the stuff that you can afford to do.
Right.
So you can't have something as a goal or a someday or a.
That's where I'm coming from.
Theresa, what if we had, provide the community with information for the responsible care for lost, abandoned and deceased?
Yeah, it's, it's the information.
Information for.
And that's what Jeff was saying, is that this is really about inform, informing the community about.
You got that, change that to provide the community with information?
For the responsible care.
Yes.
Kevin?
Writing that down right now, still staying with lost, abandoned and deceased animals or just deceased animals?
No, lot, uh.
Provide, is it two bullets?
Actually, the law, the information for lost animals or abandoned animals would be to call BHA. We do have Beartooth Humane Alliance.
Yeah.
A nonprofit, and that would be information, so somebody comes in and they find an abandoned animal, they can call the city and they'll say, well, you could put it on Facebook or you could go ahead and, you know, call BHA.
But again.
It's information.
If, to be general here, provide information regarding the responsible care, uh, for lost and abandoned deceased animals, we don't have to mention BHA or.
No, exactly, just provide, that's a, that's a, provide the community, community with information, so that would be the goal. And then under the objective, I think that we probably should remove A because discussing cost sharing between local jurisdictions to fund programs related to lost or abandoned animals, I have no idea what that program might be.
I think we have to take A out, I agree with that.
Perfect, okay. And then leave B the same though?
Right now, we're leaving B and we're discussing whether, there's two that think A ought to come out. What about Jeff?
Well, I was thinking, you get rid of the cost share piece of that and say, I thought we were talking about providing information about the public about how to deal with lost or abandoned animals. And the point that one example of that was, was, uh, BH, what was it?
BHA, Beartooth Humane Alliance?
Yeah. So I, I mean, that's what I was thinking is that the, and then, and then B, dealing with wild animals would be to um, contact Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks.
I think.
And that's information, yeah, again, the city's gonna, but A actually says to discuss the cost sharing between local jurisdictions, does that mean between us and the county?
What I'm suggesting is cross out any reference to cost sharing and just change that to provide information about how to dispose.
Or, or how to, how to care or dispose of lost, abandoned or deceased animals.
Yeah.
But that's the goal, not the objective. It was A the objective that I was having issues.
The objective is to provide information.
Yeah.
Which is the same as the goal.
No, the goal is simply provide community with responsible care for lost.
Oh no, we can't say that, I, I think that's, I, I see, I see what's happening here, so we, we changed the wording on LS six, but you're saying that that stays? Jeff, because we, we don't wanna provide the responsible care, we wanna provide the information for care of, for responsible care of lost, abandoned or deceased animals, the city can't, can't provide the care.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
But then that would eliminate A.
LS six says, says it would, provides the community with information, that, that care of lost. LS six says, says it would, provides the community with information that, that care of lost, abandoned and deceased animals. That, that's it.
Right.
And when you get over to A and B.
Well, so A would be update, update the website with information about contacting either, you know, you don't have to say it right now, but you would update the, the city website with information on where to, who to call either BHA or FWP, right? Basically, that would be the objective is to, is to provide that through the website.
Kind of think we're picking a net here. What, how about this? A would be provide information regarding local jurisdictions regarding programs related to lost or abandoned animals.
Programs?
Lost, abandoned or deceased animals.
And then, and then the B is the deceased part. The A is the lost and abandoned and B is the deceased.
Okay, I see that. So they are different.
So A is provide information regarding local jurisdiction, local programs related to lost and abandoned animals.
Ah.
That to me is clear.
Want to say that again?
Provide information regarding local jurisdictions regarding programs related to lost or abandoned animals. And then B would be ensure that the city has a plan for deceased animals to alleviate any public health risk for the citizens. And that was already in place. I think that, that does it from my mind. Kevin?
I got, got that written down as, as best I can, but we might, the way that I write it, you guys might want to take a double, double check when we get to the next draft. But I think I follow.
Okay, can we move on?
Yep. So moving on, I think that's all we had for that. So moving on to, uh, public facilities and infrastructure. Uh, IPF one, improve the water system. Uh, Sandy said, does it need improvement? Maybe not, but maintenance, yes. Uh, the reason I put improve is because it's kind of an overarching goal that you can kind of start narrowing it down. That was, that was my intention for that, but if you guys want to discuss that, go ahead.
I would go with maintain and improve.
Maintain and approve.
And improve.
Yeah.
This improve implies there's a problem with it.
Yeah. I had to.
Even though you're not sick, you always want to get better.
You always want improvement.
I like, maintain and improve works because then it does encompass two different things.
So we change IPF one to maintain and improve the water system. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, hearing those. And then there's no, no comments on A or B, right?
Comments on A or B, but we do have one for IPF one, uh, with IPF one D. And that was, do we have a local entity to create a source water protection plan? Uh, this one was also a carryover from the 2020 growth policy. So I don't really have a ton of information about the source water protection plan. Uh, so I'm not sure if anybody else does.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's up to you. It says partner with local entities to create a source water protection plan. Is, do we have a, a water protection plan and who would we partner with? Is there a local entity in charge of our water?
Oh, going back, since you enlisted my, I think what you're putting in is the, the goals, not the how. So you say maintain and improve the water system. That makes sense. When you go to.
Objectives.
Partner with local entities to create a source water protection plan. I think it's just create a source water protection plan. You're not dictating the how, you're just stating what needs to be done.
And as you recall, in our public forum, the issue of protecting our watershed came up several times.
So maybe there are some local.
I remember that correctly.
So maybe there are some.
You're, you're setting out the goals and the things that need to be addressed. You're not creating policy. You're not saying, here's how. Reach out to company X, Y, Z. You're saying protect the, you're saying create a source water protection plan.
Yes.
I mean, that's period.
Yep.
And partner with local entities? Maybe there is someone local that is an entity that.
Now you're telling me how.
Could create.
And you're limiting it. Maybe it's not a local entity that can.
Oh, hmm. So we just start with create?
I like what the mayor said.
That was create a source water protection plan.
Yes. I like that, I think.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I also agree with the mayor. We could move it to, because it's creating something, that would be a, an action. And then lo- local entities in my mind, I would think of local watershed groups, uh, conservation district, anything like that. Uh, so it could, it could be the Forest Service, anything like that. So I feel like local entities is kind of all in capturing a little bit, but if you want to reword that, we definitely can.
Do we put a parenthetical ensure consideration of blah, blah, blah? And then put in the list there?
And again, I think we're picking a net.
We need to.
Yeah, Susan.
I've got a question even stranger and that is by water protection plan, do we mean to protect the water from being anything other than clean? Or do we mean protect the amount of water that we have?
Not the water, but the what?
The amount of water that we have.
The volume.
The volume.
I think the answer is yes and yes.
Okay. Because when you look at it, I was trying to figure out, does it mean one or the other or does it mean both?
It, it would be described in a plan that was, that would be created. So I, I would imagine Susan, it would include even more than that. We don't even know yet, right?
All right. So the wording for D is what?
Partner with local entities to create a source water protection plan. I don't.
We're gonna leave it as if.
I don't think that we've moved off of that really.
I think just create a source.
I don't think, I think his question is where did we land? And you started by rereading the sentence. Is that, or you say?
Because we didn't, we didn't change it at all. We talked about creating a source water protection plan, but that was an action. It wasn't an objective. And so that's where I pulled it out because that was an object, uh, an action, not an objective.
So does it read as an objective if you say protect, uh, water, a water source by creating a, or partnering to create a water protection plan? You know, something like that. Is it, is it really, I mean, they're so close together. So the objective is to protect source water by creating a source water protection plan, but that seems really redundant.
The objective is to create.
That's action.
Or to implement.
Action.
Implement a, a source water protection plan. I think if you say local entities, that is limiting.
Yeah.
So you want the city to create and implement a water, our source water protection plan. Is that right? That's our objective.
I was, I was thinking, going back to the objective and then an action to go with it would be, the objective would be to protect the city's water sources.
Okay.
The action would be then to.
To implement, create and implement.
Create a watershed protection or water source protection plan. That would be it. That would be later on.
So D, so D and your wording would be.
Protect.
Create a source water protection plan, period?
No, it would be to protect the city's water sources.
Okay.
It sounds right.
Now where we are on, on D, D would be, we don't have to say the city. We just say protect.
The water sources.
The water source.
Yep. And then move the plan to the, to the action item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. That sounds good. Got that. I got that written down, so we should be able to move on.
Okay. We got about another 10 or 12 minutes.
Okay. That sounds great. So moving, so then moving quickly to IPF three.
Jeff's got, Jeff's got something.
Oh, sorry.
To, if we don't, don't mention the city, is it understood that it's the city's water sources?
I, I like having the city in there because it, it's, it could be huge in some people's minds when they go to, when they think about it, the water source. How far back do you go? So.
What if we say? Like protecting the public water source? Public water source, yeah.
What if the infrastructure goals, the IPF one was, uh, maintain and improve the city water source?
System.
Water system.
Well, the, the system, that talks generally about the system. That's the goal. The specific objective is an element of that. It, an element of that is the city's water sources. So this.
Well, you can't, you can't put that in the goal and then you don't have to keep mentioning city on your objectives if you say that it's the city water system?
Well, to me, water system implies both the infrastructure and the water source. That's the, that's the entirety. That's the system.
And, and, and I like the public because it limits the scope to that portion that the city is responsible for providing. I have a well in that city water. That's not what we're talking about here.
Ah.
And then what I was getting, what I was getting at Sandy, when we talk, when D talks about an, an element of the system, with, it wa- water source is an element of that system. And so, so it would be to protect the public's water, water sources is the objective.
Okay. So have we changed the wording? And if so, what specifically have we changed?
I think we're.
Added city. The city's water.
Be public, the public water sources rather than city.
Okay.
Are you talking to IPF one now?
Are you talking about changing the goal to the public water system?
No, no, the goal stays the same. Improve the water system.
Okay.
The objective D would change that to say, um, pro- protect the public's, public water sources.
Yes.
And then the action item later on would be.
Creating a plan.
Okay, Kevin, have you got that? I thought we had D, but we just changed it.
No.
It's all right. I got it all written down.
Quite.
Okay.
All right. So then for ready to move on, uh, IPF three is improved the storm water system. I can add maintain so we can keep it on, on par.
Yeah.
Yep.
Improve and maintain.
Okay. That's pretty easy. Let me write that down real quick.
Actually, same with two and four, maintain and improve.
Good point. I can add that for every single one.
Can we, did we get any input from this or has it been requested from Mike Maples at all for, um, Public Works?
Not yet, but as we go through this, he's gonna have a look at this at some point before we finalize it.
Yeah, it's, I wonder at IPF or IPF three because storm water, um, you know, we just talked about protecting water sources under water system and under storm water or, um, storm water is actually, our storm water system is protected by the culverts and the curbs and the sidewalks that we would put, culverts that we would put in later under complete streets, but we don't, we don't even mention those here. So, I mean, that's pretty important. I was thinking.
At the top of this, wasn't this just the waters, the water system? And that's something you protect. Storm water is not something that you protect. It's something you make go away.
No, but you protect your storm water system by completing the streets that aid in the storm water. There are part of that storm water system actually.
Well, IPF two is to improve the city's wastewater collection and treatment system.
I just would think.
Curves and gutters would be part of that.
Well, the storm water system is where you add the culverts and the curbs and all that stuff to move the water down toward the drainages. But, um, so could I just, if, if we're not going to change this or if I'm going too deep in this, but can, can we at least make sure to ask Mike about this for public, a public works perspective?
We definitely will. I, I think we need to put what we think our wording is in there, um, knowing Mike the way I do. Um, and then he will agree, disagree or edit.
The, the purpose of this document is for a board to put out and summarize the goals that the city is working to implement. And, and by definition, you know, they can look, bang, no, no, this is wrong. Or that's, that's, that's a later down. That's a, we're implementing.
Yeah, but I think to Teresa's point is we want to make a growth policy attainable goals. And if, if Mike goes, whoa, we can't.
Right, right. But, but that's a, that's a, that's a post evaluation and review, not you go create it.
No, well.
No, we're, we're not asking him to create it. We're, we're just asking him for his input on this one thing because to me, the way our CIP reads, we would want to say identify funding sources to create complete streets that protect our storm water system or complete our storm water system actually.
We are agreeing with you, Teresa. It's just a question of when he takes a look at it and, and he will take a look at it certainly before it's finalized. But I'd like to kind of get through this to give him something to look at. So on IPF three, improve and maintain storm water system. We agreed to that. And then on A, have, have we agreed to that? Finding sources to continue storm water infrastructure upgrades?
And that storm water, uh, infra- infrastructure upgrades would be streets and gutters and all of that.
All encompassing, isn't it?
Right. And I was wondering if there should also be another objective is to pay the, uh, that program, pay the storm water off early. You know, either with, you know, we, we talked about that.
Is that a growth walk, policy deal? I don't think so.
To pay it off early?
Yeah. That's an administrative deal.
Yeah, that's more of an administrative thing.
In my.
It is one of the goals, I think, for the city is to try to get that paid off early. It's why I didn't know if it needed to be in here.
I don't know if it needs to be in our growth policy though. Jeff, what do you think?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't.
Dan, what do you think?
No, I think it's an administrative. It's gonna be, yeah, it's his problem.
It's our problem. We're.
Okay, um, Kevin, let's see if we can get through this one here.
Right, for the IPF three, I'll move on to IPF four.
Yeah.
So we got two comments. One is, uh, to change identify to pursue. And then one is to add in, add and include plan for complete streets with curb gutter and row. So we kind of already just discussed that.
Oh, yeah. Yes. I brought that prematurely. Yeah.
That's all right. That's all right. Uh, are we, do we want to change identify to pursue for, uh, IPF three A?
Identify.
Funding sources.
And pursue funding sources. Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect. All right. So then moving on to IPF four. And if, if it's all right with the board, I'm gonna read this off and then I'm gonna run and use the restroom real quick. And then I'll be back while you guys debate.
Well, we're.
He has to go now. Let him go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we'll just call it right here. Okay?
We're good, good right here? Are you sure I can come back in a second?
Yeah, just wait you before you go. Hey Kevin, we'll keep in touch. I'd like to just put this on the agenda for the 14th of August, but, uh, we'll let you know. Okay? Hey, Kevin, we'll keep in touch. I'd like to just put this on the agenda for the fourteenth of August, but uh we'll let you know, okay?
Great, that sounds great. I really appreciate the board taking the time to go through all this, and we'll keep plugging away.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, thank you, guys.
We started IPF four.
All right, sounds great. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Um it's all good discussion. I mean, you know, it's just this document is such a key document to what we're doing here. We must, we need to take the time, however much time it takes.
However much time it takes.
Okay, um staff communication and updates, Greg?
Uh, the only thing is we have a sign permit um that's scheduled for August twenty eighth.
August twenty eighth, but our next meeting is the fourteenth, right?
Yeah, we just with public notice and complete review, we couldn't get it on that agenda.
Okay, so right now
What kind of a sign?
Uh eternally illuminated.
Neon.
Only neon.
But that kind of a sign.
Yeah, and it's out of these lumber stores down.
Yeah, they're 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 changing the 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 wording of of the of the
Company?
Lumber store on the upper right, but because of that um it it's changing the size. Their their current size wouldn't sign wouldn't be allowed if my memory serves me correctly, but basically it just they they need to, it's one that falls on the planning board.
Yeah, and yeah, and so it should be fairly straightforward, but you never know. But right now, you don't have anything for August fourteenth?
Nothing.
So that right now could be growth policy for the whole two hours. And if that's the case for two hours, I'd like, we have Kevin here for that.
Kevin, are you available?
Back out.
He's not there, there. We can we can, I'm from from the city perspective, I have zero problems with that.
If he's available for to go in two hours, I mean, this was fine for hour.
But if if I get it, I will I will not be the the city budget will not be the constraint.
Jeff, you you want him here, right?
Yeah, because it's actually a grant.
Um and we need to make sure everybody gets a job. Sorry.
Got a big announcement.
Had to be a tough night.
It's all good.
Um, any other things from the staff?
No.
Um, any petitions or communications from the audience? Anybody want to talk to us?
Would would you, nothing, nothing online? Um, did you want me to provide any? I I guess Sandy already provided a kind of a summary that that it came up last night. Jeff, I understand you were there. Did you give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down on last night's meeting as far as how we addressed the subdivision?
Yeah, I I mean, it was pretty straightforward that it was tabled to withdraw the application.
But no new information came up. They they heard the same thing we heard, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I what I what I think, and I'll allow Jeff to counter, what I think is that the audience heard something different than what they heard the time before. We I tried to say, here's what's out there, and here's here's what the discussion is about. Here's what you're talking, you know, here's a little bit higher.
You clarified what our role was in this particular thing.
I did I did do that, I felt. Again, I'll refer to Jeff to to
Well, I think, yeah, relative to the fact that we were addressing zoning, but I think what some of them what I heard from some of the audience in the previous meeting, I was repeated last night, is there's an existing P U D and there's a cons there's a concern besides just the traffic issue. There's a concern about the fact that the original P U D provided for multiple types of housing. They had a topology plan for workforce housing and for higher end housing. And that's, to me, that's what I'm hearing from them is they want to continue with that vision to the remainder of the eighty seven acres.
Because that's what they bought into.
That's what
And 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 that's important for us to remember and and to share too, that it's the most restrictive that applies. So that P U D is still in effect. So that doesn't that doesn't override, subdivisions won't override that, zoning won't override it. Whatever the most restrictive element is, applies.
The R three, and I'm glad you did. I thought we tried to make that clear that night, but it was kind of chaotic. It, you know, it was what it was.
There was too much, too much misinformation that was out there and
But like I said, I had met with the three HOA people since the last meeting, and I made it very clear R three, what the rules were for that and P U D, what the rules were for that, and I their big issues of connectivity is, you know.
Unfortunately.
That's gonna come up and re and I referred him to the annexation plan.
And every every document we have says that will be interconnected.
And they didn't hear it.
I think Diamond C's issue is connectivity.
Yeah.
But the spire's issue is more than just the
It's more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're they bought into a vision on how that, I mean, how that would be expanded out on. Their concern is that by changes to R four, that would have basically erased that vision.
Understand, R three still gives a multiple Oh, yeah.
Up to four.
But yeah, my my point is that the P U D that they bought into that it that had provisions for multi- multi- multifamily housing, workforce housing and and high bug, what was called high bug housing. That was all part of the vision that they bought into.
It's part of our zoning. It was ecology.
And they wanted that, wanted to ensure that that's extended
Right.
Into the
Right.
Correct.
Remainder of it.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Anyway, so it's been tabled. It'll be interesting to see if it comes back to um
Us.
Uh, anything else? Teresa, you got anything? Other business?
How's connectivity or wherever you want?
I'm sorry?
No, nothing for me, Al. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else?
Nope.
We're turned three minutes early.
Oh, my gosh. That goes for the two hours later.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, shall I hit the button?
Fourteenth of August.